We'll bring this meeting back into order. Just a quick report out from the closed session. An agreement on the separation of city manager has been agreed upon with the terms of it. And we'll come back to that item later during its open session portion. With that, if everyone could please stand for the flag.
United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Um, with that, we'll move on to item number five. We do have a special presentation tonight. The eighteenth annual Read Across Siskiwe presented by First Five California.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can just sign it right now.
So we are here to let you know that next Wednesday will be the eighteenth annual Read Across Siskiwe. And it's a whole campaign to promote the importance of early literacy for all our county's children. So there are about more than fifty reading events scheduled of the same book. The book's been distributed throughout the counties. I was just in at the Tulley Lake City Council meetings and the Doris City Council meeting. So it's really interesting to go out into the communities and and reach out to the families and and tell people about this event. And so would you like to read the proclamation?
Um, sure. Okay, you can do that. The eighteenth annual Read Across Siskiwe two thousand twenty-five event sponsored by First Five Siskiwe Children and Families Commission. Whereas the ultimate goal of the First Five Siskiwe Children and Families Commission is that all of Siskiwe County's children from prenatal through five years of age will be healthy, ready to learn, and supported in safe nurturing families and communities. And whereas children in Siskiwe County from prenatal through five years of age have a successful start in life through daily reading with supportive and nurturing families, caregivers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas early literacy is the foundation for academic, social, emotional, and economic success. And whereas First Five Siskiwe in partnership with the Siskiwe County Library dedicates one day each year to promote early literacy by providing the same titled book to be read by guest readers to children in various preschools, kindergartens, childcare settings, libraries, and online events through Siskiwe County on the same day, and provide each child with a copy of that book to take home. Therefore, the city of Dunsmere hereby proclaims November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five as the eighteenth anniversary of Read Across Siskiwe. And be it that this body enthusiastically endorses daily reading, singing, and playing with children as a critical foundation for healthy development and lifelong success.
Thank you so much. So, oh, yeah. I just attended an all-day session about adverse childhood experiences. And it talks a lot about the neuropathways in your brain and how a lot of those neuropathways get set at the very early ages, very, very early, like birth to two and then two to five. And so reading is can be really crucial to understanding sounds and language at a very young age. And so and I also included in your packet media guidelines because I feel like the laws don't always keep up with technology and neither do like the parental advice. So what I put together was from the American Medical Association. And so it had some recommendations for for children even up to the age of eighteen. So anyway, thank you so much for for having me. And thank you for so much for adopting this proclamation. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll open this up for public comment. This is a time for members of the general public to address the city council on items related to city business. If you would like to make a comment, you'll have three minutes. I will give a thirty-second warning when your time is almost up. For the record, if you don't mind, please state your name and address. If you are wanting to talk to something about either old business or new business, I do request that you hold your comment for that time as there will be dedicated public comment periods for those particular items. If you'd like to say something on one of the consent agenda items, however, this is the time as there is not a separate public comment or consent agenda. We'll do individuals in the room first, followed by individuals on Zoom. If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please go to the React tab and raise your hand and go right ahead.
My name is Big Dave and everybody knows where I live. And I have to leave because I have a dinner appointment where I'm signing contracts for a project. I had to come tonight because I hope. Young lady, it's nice to see you back at the party. And it's nice to see an empty chair. So nice. I would hope that by the end of tonight, when you guys go talking about whatever, that the community is clear on what happened. We need to know what the hell happened. Something ain't right. Please set the record straight on what happened. But nobody needs this and no one needs that and question this quite too much innuendos and hearsay. So on behalf of me and a lot of people in this community, set the record straight. And one more thing. Man's pit. He's pulled my ass as well as Samiral's ass out of it a few times. He's done a fantastic job every time. And I think your next city manager is sitting right there. So if I can nominate, I'd like to nominate Blake Michaelson. If he would accept the position to be the city manager, I thank you for what you have done. There's a lot of us that would support you for what you would do. A thousand percent. I care about this community. I tried for a long time to get an empty chair. Couldn't do it anymore. You have what we need. Thank you, council, and thank you, people.
Thank you. Is there any other further public comment? Seeing none.
Dwight Bailey, five oh six Castle Avenue. Later on, there's going to be a discussion Blake said about talking about projects for the city. There will be a public comment period at that time. I'll reserve it for then.
Thank you.
Question. Will there be the dismissal of the release of the contract with your city manager? Is that on the agenda for later for discussion?
Right. Any other further public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment for this thing. All right, with that, we'll move on to council and staff comments, starting with Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Mayor. The city had a fantastic Halloween. No major incidents to report for the entire month of October. We've upped our school bus patrols in regard to people honoring flashing red light. Please don't run over our children because it takes thirty seconds. I know it seems like it may take a while, but leave sooner and honor the red lights because that's a stinky ticket. Thanks.
Acting City Manager Michaelson. Yes, thank you, council. I just wanted to make a quick comment on. We were talking about this a little bit before, but shut-off day is the first Monday of the month. And I realize that brings up emotions. But if I just make a general public service announcement that if you do have specific issues and you would like to be vociferous or vocal or raise your voices, just please direct that toward myself. People in City Hall, the rest of the staff are doing a great job. They don't, I'm trying to keep the loud voices and choice language. So if just please just direct that at me, I will be happy to take your comments, concerns, questions. So that's just a general public service announcement out there to please refrain from doing that towards city staff other than myself. Just come talk to me. My one oh five is my extension at City Hall. Email address is on the webpage. Whatever you guys need to do, just come talk to me. All right, that's all. Thanks, council.
Thank you. Councilmember Brian.
Sure. I just want to take a moment to thank all the people who engaged in the civic process of discussing Measure D. And we don't know the final results yet, but the the whole exercise over the last month and a half, the questions I received, whether it was in the grocery store or through email or at events, I appreciate, you know, for or against. There's arguments for that, but I've heard so many recommendations and thoughts on how we should run the city from people that often aren't as involved. I'd encourage you to keep that engagement going, whether it passes or not. We still have to move forward as a city and work to our mutual prosperity. So I just want to thank everyone who took a little bit of time and some who took a lot more than a little bit of their time for all that. And then I want to comment to city manager, Acting City Manager Blake's comment, it is not appropriate to abuse any of our city staff, including the finance director, including the city manager. You can disagree without being disagreeable. I think if members of our community, and I'm not talking to any individual here in the room or on Zoom, if members of our community cannot behave in a civil manner, whether it's through abusive language or actions, they are not welcome in City Hall. And we can take further preventative actions to limit their access. I think we need to really not tolerate that sort of behavior. So I actually fundamentally disagree. I'm glad you're willing to take one for your team, Blake. But if that sort of behavior is happening, it needs to be a council item. And we're going to figure out how to limit that sort of behavior because it's inappropriate.
Thank you. Councilmember Lucchese.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you for the chamber, for the really lovely mural block party event that was this last weekend. It was really lovely. Great to see everybody out. Love those little micro events that are kind of happening. It really shows that you don't have to put in a ton of effort to really kind of make people get together. I just want to remind everybody this weekend is Second Saturday, so there's several different art events. It is Second Saturday, yeah. I have to remember what month it is. It's Second Saturday this weekend, so there's several different SAM events, events at Be Kind, events throughout the community. So I really hope everybody can get out, even if you're not going to spend money in the community, go and spend time with other people, connect with each other. I think that's really important now more than ever that we continue to engage in a really positive manner in the community. On that note, I understand that there are members of our community who are struggling a little bit more than others with the federal shutdown, specifically for those who need healthcare, food access, housing assistance. And so I just want to put it out there that Assemblywoman Heather Hadwick's office has a really nice website full of recommendations for Siskiwe County. They are unfortunately listed under Sierra County, but if you go down, there are different addresses, phone numbers for different types of assistance for those who need it. So those who are on food assistance, some of those resources are the Siskiwe Community Food Bank, Siskiwe County Health and Human Services, Siskiwe Food Assistance. In addition to that, you can also call two one one, which is a free service that guides you to different local food, housing, and utility support in our area. There's also two two one dot org, which is a website that is the same resources. And so if you do know anyone who's struggling right now with the federal shutdown and subsidies because they were receiving those, please direct them to two one one at least. It's really hard right now for a lot of people and we need to kind of come together. Additionally, Be Kind has offered to help feed people who are experiencing food insecurity because of the federal shutdown. Please, if you are able to, if you do have money and you are really fortunate to do that, please go and enjoy our businesses because they are starting to support some of our most vulnerable in the community. It's not a fun time for them, so please reach out and do that. And if you see someone who needs assistance, please try and lend a hand to do that. There is also the Employment Development Department or EDD that can also help with unemployment and wage replacement programs. So I just wanted to put that out there for some of our more vulnerable residents.
I think we're going to have one more before we go. Guess not. Councilmember Hubbard.
Yeah, I'd just like to briefly thank Acting City Manager Michaelson for taking on an additional hat. And I already appreciate your communication and collaboration.
I just wanted to thank everyone who came out for Greenways today. It was pouring rain and miserable, but everyone was out there working their butts off, so thank you for that.
All right. For myself, I also want to thank For those of you who don't know, Acting City Manager Blake, in addition to being the Acting City Manager, Finance Director, is also in charge of day-to-day IT. So man of many talents and many hats. That should work.
That works.
I'd also like to thank the chamber for putting on the block party. It was a wonderful event. It was good to see so many members of the community out there. I'd also like to thank all the city staff for Greenways Day and all the hard work out there in the rain and the volunteers as well. Those volunteers were standing out there all day in the rain, getting wet, giving people a chance to make their homes more fire safe and also improve our community by having that stuff get dealt with and also not just sitting there being a fire hazard. The last thing I'd like to kind of just let everyone know is for those of you who don't know, after talking about it or in trying to get the program started for months, the waterfall grants have officially launched. So if you know of anyone or any community group or nonprofit who needs money to complete projects in town, there are, I think, approximately ten grants, if not more, at various levels that groups can apply to. I would encourage everyone to be realistic about the funding that they need and what level to apply for, as there are different levels. Because the last thing we need is for everyone to apply for one level when there's only one or two grants available at that level. So request some of the, yeah, so be realistic about what kind of projects you can do. We need small projects. We need medium-sized projects. We need large projects. So please spread that around the community and point them towards the city website to get more information on the various grant levels. All right, with that, we'll move on to committee reports. And I don't believe that we had a committee meet in less than two weeks. All right, approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from ten to twenty twenty-five through ten sixteen, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion to approve minutes for ten to twenty twenty-five and ten sixteen, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Oh, second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And it's approved. Move on to item number ten, the Consent Agenda, which today consists of three items, the check register for ten eleven through ten thirty-one, approval of updated contracts for engineering services for Butterfly Bridge Project with current engineer Jacobs Engineering Incorporated. And item number C, appointment of city clerk by adopting Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twenty, resolution of the Dunsmere City Council ratifying the appointment of the city clerk.
Motion to adopt the Consent Agenda as presented.
Oh, second.
All right, and we'll have to do a roll call on this one.
Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
Councilmember Sebring.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Vice, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Sebring. Councilmember Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilmember Lucchese.
Aye.
And Mayor Clarno.
Aye.
Motion As part of this, we do have to swear in the city clerk. So with that, Wendy, if you want to write up here.
I, Wendy Perkins.
So I'll swear.
Do affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I'll bear full allegiance to the Constitution of the United, am I on the right line? The full allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the State of California. You go ahead.
But I take this obligation freely and without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you, Mayor Zanna.
All right. For that, we'll move on to item number eleven, public hearing, of which we have none. We also have no old business, so move into new business. And we'll start off with item A. Approve amended employment agreement with city manager. Right. David, do you want to go or do you want me to just start off and take this one?
At your pleasure, Mr. Mayor. I can make a brief summary if you like.
Okay, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, members of the city councils, this is a separation agreement or an employment amendment to the employment agreement of city manager Dustin Reeve. Now, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Trying to make sure. This is done in lieu of any discipline or dismissal, and it was agreed upon in close session and is brought before the council in open session for approval as required by law. To summarize, under the terms of this amended agreement, employment agreement with Mr. Reeve, he will be on paid administrative leave through the end of this year. Paid his full salary and benefits. Beginning January third, twenty twenty-six, he will replace, he will resign his position and be paid severance paid that runs through June sixth, twenty twenty-sixth, and be able to cash out any vacation and employment benefits, including healthcare for that time period. But that will effectively, this effectively wraps up Mr. Reeve's time as a city manager effective as soon as the council ratifies this agreement. No questions.
Thank you. I just want to kind of just explain this process a little bit to everyone out here. So when city managers are hired in order to get someone into that position, basically severance package has to be agreed upon in the contract for when they depart the position. The reason this item is on here today is that due to just basic structural elements. There was a strike restructuring. It's still the same basic amount. It's just restructured where some of that is now as wages versus all of it being paid out as severance. It doesn't affect really the amount that's being paid out or anything like that. Still, we still have to pay out original severance term. It's just the structure of said terms are being edited slightly just to match what's required in the real world versus what was in the original contract language. So with that, as of once the city council passes this, agreement will be finalized. Blake will be the, well, Blake is the potential. Yep, we then will move on to the next couple items, which is appoint an active city manager and discuss the permanent city manager search slash hiring. So basically, this item is just restructuring language with the severance agreement that was in the contract when he was hired. With that.
Can I also clarify? So it's a little bit more than that. It also, what carries over the hold harmless and liability release, mutual liability release that that's mentioned in the original contract, but puts it at the center of what is now a voluntary resignation with this. It's just the best path forward that both parties agreed upon in principle. But I'd love to hear from our members of the public with their public comment next.
All right, any other questions, comments before we move on to public comment? Nope. All right, with that, I'm going to open this item up for public comment. Same rules as general public comment, three minutes. I'll give a thirty-second warning when your time is almost up. We'll do individuals in the room first, followed by individuals on Zoom. With that, please limit your comments to this particular item. And with that, I will open it up to public comments.
Alan Clother, forty-four oh nine Oak Street. I echo Big Dave's comment in that the city needs to know some of the details for where Dustin fell short. And they need to be able to articulate those desires for our next city manager. And so without going, this is where we fell short. So next time, let's go along in these areas. So so I agree with him. I think whether you have to come up with a politically safe statement or reflect it in a, these are the things we'd like to see in a new city manager and imply, and we didn't have that. I think it's important to build trust with the community. The question I have is whether this also takes care of any outstanding worker complaints. Thanks.
Thank you. Just for those who are unaware, generally, we go through all the public comments. Any questions that are raised are then all answered. Post-public comment period. So with that, next individual.
Look, Brian Wilson, forty-four eleven Olive Street. First of all, I want to thank council for coming through and making a tough decision. I wish it was a couple of years sooner. I think that I think that when you hire somebody and you go through these hiring firms and you spend a lot of money, you're kind of invested in who you bring in. And it's too bad because I felt like that handcuffed a lot of the ability for you guys to do your job. And unfortunately, when you bring somebody into this town that doesn't care about this town and you have them lead, it's going to show at some point. And it's, it started to really show and and I and I care, I love this town. I care about this town. And I felt like that was what Mr. Reeve really did not like about me. I felt like that was of, and to have somebody that runs your town and fills that way about your people. The next time through, I hope you you think about the town and not about the business of the town. And this guy here, he's a great guy. He has a, he has a good heart. I know, I know that he, he probably would have liked to have said more than he did over the past couple of years, but thank you for still being you and staying you. And I wish you guys good luck with the next hire. I'm going to try to be more positive to what you guys are going to try to do from here on out. Because everybody makes mistakes and and now you just move on. So so thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, is there any more? And yes, I do see that we have a comment on Zoom. We'll get to you in just a minute here.
Alan McGonya, four one one six Pine Street and five eight zero seven Shasta Avenue. I just want to thank you guys for your guys' hard work and trying to get this matter figured out as soon as possible. And your guys' effort is much appreciated by the community. So I look forward to the snowball effect that this can do for the rest of our community in the next couple of years. And thank you guys for your time once again.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in the room? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to Zoom. I do see that we have one commenter on Zoom. If you'd like to unmute them. All right, Dina, you should be unmuted.
Hey, can you hear me all right?
Hey, can you hear me all right?
We can.
All right. Well, you know what? I had this whole big thing I was gonna say. Just about how I was a little bit disappointed about some things, and I, I feel like, uh, I really feel like Mr. Reeve, he, he tricked a lot of people. He tricked me. He tricked our town. And I'm just so disappointed in people that do that. I'm sorry, I'm just a little bit emotional because I'm glad to see that this is ending. And I'm sorry to see that it's cost us so much. And now it's gonna cost us even more because now we're being asked to support and approve a generous severance package. Again, because this is a pattern of Mr. Reeve. I did a deep dive. And you know what? This is the fourth time he's done this. Each time he's come up with a job where he spent maybe two years and he leaves with a generous severance, all his vacation pay and everything. So I just, we gotta learn this lesson, let's get it right next time, all right? Let's just get it right. Do what you gotta do, but please, please just take into consideration that he is not financially inept. He owns two homes and he has had a generous, a generous salary for the last two years. That's all I have to say, thank you for your time. Wait, there's one more thing I wanna say. Congratulations, uh, uh, city clerk. Nicely done, you've had, you've had quite a year yourself. And, um, I look forward, I look forward to, uh, Sarah's appointment to mayor, possible appointment to mayor. All right, that's all I have to say, thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any additional public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. And we'll move on to discussion. Any discussion?
I think just to, um, address, I believe, the two questions related to why we're reaching a settlement, um, I don't think that's appropriate for me to speak on tonight, um, within closed session. Um, I will just share that the city council will be putting out, uh, a statement in terms of, of that release. Uh, we did not feel comfortable doing that tonight until we, uh, went through the proper channels of, of going through the agreement. Um, so, uh, we will be hopefully doing that through the mayor, um, here shortly. So I just wanna let everyone know that we were not prepared to do that tonight, um, but we did, uh, discuss it and hopefully we'll have something shortly.
All right, and then, um, I also agree that we need to come up with some lists of what we'd like to see, uh, with our next city manager.
We do have an item, we just discussed that.
I, I know, I was about to bring that up, um, and so I was gonna say, I won't comment on that now because I just feel like that would be a, uh, better topic for, uh, two items from now. So, uh, with that, um.
Could, could I get, if, if Mr. Lim has anything to offer on the one question as far as protecting us, uh, going forward, my understanding is this, this would close out the entire employment relationship with Mr. Reeve, but if our attorney could clarify that for the one public commenter that was asking about workman's comp, if it's appropriate, I don't.
Uh, yes, this, uh, appointment amendment, uh, wraps up all business with Mr. Reeve and Alexander, the mayor of Illinois, and they want to.
All right, thank you for that clarification for the public.
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended appointment agreement with city manager Dustin Reed, government code 54953 subsection C subsection 3 as presented.
I'll second.
All right, I believe this has to be roll call.
Yes.
All right. We've been seconded, and we'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Lucaci?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Hi.
Councilmember Brian?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sebring?
Aye.
Mayor Quinno?
Aye.
And with that, we'll move on to the next item. Appointment of acting city manager.
Point, point of clarification
Yes.
um, to David, would it be more appropriate to list us as an interim city manager instead of acting, since he would be filling the role?
Um, semantically, legally, I don't think it makes a difference, but usually the general practice is the, the use of term acting was what he is now, until you appointed him, but that's just what everyone does, legally, there's.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I just, Wyrika's going through a similar thing, an interim, and Calpers was weird about it, so that's why I was kinda asking. So, there's all.
I'll change my answer, then if Calpers cares, then you should do what Calpers says.
Okay. Okay.
All right. So, um, any questions, discussion, um, so basically, the basic rundown of this is uh, the last action of the former city manager was to, uh, appoint Blake as the acting city manager, um, however, just as council, um, I know I, which is why I added this to the agenda, would like something coming from us, um, just to give a little bit more, um, authority to, uh, the position as coming from council uh, versus coming from, uh, an employee who is no longer with us. So, uh, with that, any questions or, um, comments before we open this up to public comment? Nope, all right, with that, I will open up this item for public comment, three minutes, I'll give a 30 second warning. Individuals in the room first, followed by Zoom, uh, please limit any comment to this particular item. Seeing no one, I will close public comment.
For the chair?
Yes.
Um, I have no issue with the item. The only thing that I would probably want to maybe table this to the next meeting is that typically with an interim city manager or when you have an employee that is filling a role that they were not initially hired for, it's appropriate to assess the funding for that individual, so typically if someone is moving from either an HR director or finance director position into an interim city manager role, there is additional compensation for taking on additional duties that are not originally assigned. Um, and so I would like to see a compensation package to reflect the additional duties, um, for the interim position, um, to compensate Mr. Michelson for his time.
Let me, I'm supportive of working that out. I, I interpret this not so much as, maybe this is semantics, but I think of interim as more like, this is the plan for several months. This is what we're doing, let's negotiate something appropriate. Acting, I think of as more emergency. So I, I, I view this acting as in, until we have that broader discussion
Okay.
on whether we wanna go with an outside interim, have, have finance director Michelson take it on for the duration of the time, I think it's part of that broader conversation, so if you're comfortable with it, why don't we interpret this as, uh, acting until we?
And then bring the interim discussion to the next meeting?
Yeah.
That was my intention when I put this on, it's kind of structured like that, so that way we could then have the next discuss, or that this, this, or council member Brian was discussing during the next item, and then bring it back with.
To agree with what I believe the mayor was saying, this essentially just ratifies with cancel, by council, the decision to have Blake be acting in the immediate future.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense, okay.
Yep.
I just didn't wanna shove you in a position and be like, get over it, you're not gonna get paid for doing all this extra work that you didn't shed on for technically.
No, definitely.
Thank you for clar- or, thank you for the concern.
There is also a whole thing with Calpers with the compensation, and you, uh, I did learn that you can technically only have an interim for six months. Otherwise, it really messes up your Calpers, so, which Calpers is California pension system. Um, for those who don't know that acronym, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm happy with that, so, um, I'm happy to make the motion to appoint, uh, Blake Michelson as the acting city manager and, um, request that an interim city manager item be placed on the next, uh, regular agenda.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Could I add one point of discussion while we're all here? Uh, in the event, cause that's a lot of pressure on Blake, i- in the event, Blake, that you're not available, what's the line of succession from you? Is it chief?
Or just, or?
Typically, you got.
Succession might not be the right word.
Well, if someone can't get ahold of you.
Baby. There you go, I like chain.
I, I think it's good to understand the chain of command, yeah, do you have a, a thought on that?
Uh, I'd say either, yeah, chief and probably works director, you know, Dennis.
Okay, yeah, yeah, both of those would be.
Yeah, that would be great, and I did just wanna make a point that, uh, I love the city, I love Dunsmere, and I'm happy to, uh, provide all the support to council and to the citizens, so, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, um, let's move on to the next item, discuss, uh, permanent city manager search slash hiring.
I'm sorry, did, did we have a vote on that one?
We.
We did.
Wait.
It wasn't, it wasn't a roll call, no, it wasn't a roll call, yeah, I think that's, yeah, we decided really quick, yeah, no, you're good.
Just, yeah, we did, I know we did.
We did.
A long day, I had to drive.
Well, we can all vote again.
Okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes, it's been a long day, I had a meeting in Sacramento this morning and had to drive up, so, I apologize, all right. Discuss permanence, permanent city manager search slash.
I think we should open this to public comment first, if you don't mind.
Yeah, to hear from the public on it before.
Okay.
Then we can.
Um, all right with everybody?
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, uh, with that, before we start, uh, talking, um, we'll open this up for public comment, so we can get your input, um, on the search, your input on what we should be looking for into the future, um. Yeah, so three minutes, 30 second warning, I do see a hand up on Zoom, we'll get there in just a minute, please limit, uh, comments to this particular item, however, it's a fairly broad item. So with that, I will be a little bit more lenient, um, and with that, I'll open it up for public comment.
Well, and I, I should probably say, I would like to clarify, this is not about selecting a person that's not on the agenda today, like.
Yeah.
So don't comment on who you think should be city manager, but how you think we should find search and conduct the hiring process for a city manager, is what we're discussing.
Yeah, we're not gonna make a decision on who the next city manager is tonight, so, um, more just what we're looking for, how we're doing the search, um, that kind of stuff, so with that, I'll open it up.
Kate Clother, 4403 Oak Street, um, I understand that when Dustin Reeve was hired, there was actually a really excellent local candidate who didn't even get an interview, and, um, I think he would have been wonderful, he's not going to reapply. Um, and I just hope that if we do have local folks applying, that you will take the time to at least interview them. Um, I think it would be wonderful to have our next city manager, um, be someone who really understands and loves this town, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Alan Clother, 4409 Oak Street. Uh, as I have, uh, done a lot of executive management through the years and seen a lot of transitions, my recommendation as we begin putting together what we're looking for in the city manager is to interview all of the staff for staff culture, for what they need in a city manager, so we're not just handing them the next leader. Uh, I also would recommend that we pursue, uh, town hall with the community to say, where have we fallen short? Um, you know, the city manager basically is our CEO. Right now, you're our CEO. CEOs are the cultural architect of organizations. And I think we've heard time and time again that there's some architectural needs in our city staff and our city culture, so I just encourage you to do that. I think you all know I've also offered to help in any way I can.
Thank you.
I think a committee approach is a, a great way to go, I think, uh, members from the public, uh, business owners, uh, staff members, uh, somebody that you can get a good feel on, on whoever we bring in from, from all the different angles, uh, I hope they have experience with, uh, I hope they don't come in and wanna micromanage their staff. We had a city manager that came in and, uh, one time they hired, and, and I think he was asked by council, what would you do if you came in and there's a foot of snow on the ground? And you know what the city manager, it was Randy, Randy Johnson, and he says, you know what I would do? I'm gonna go in my office and drink my coffee and let my public works dr- uh, director handle the snow removal operations, and if he needs my help, that's what I, I'll help him with. The last guy, he wanted to run the equipment, and he wanted to be the public works director. That is not the kind of guy you wanna bring in next, I promise you that, because it'll, it's not, it's not what you're hiring him to do, for one thing. So hopefully find somebody that is a manager and wants to manage his different departments.
All right, anyone else in the room? All right, seeing no one, I believe Dina's hand is up, not just left up from the last comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, so do you wanna unmute her?
Okay, can you hear me again?
We can.
All right, I promise to hold it together, I promise. But, uh, all right, based on, you know, based on what I said last time, I really think this needs to be more personal, we gotta just kinda do a deep dive on whoever it is, and, um, it's, I just, I don't, what I don't want it to happen is that we go way far away and have somebody in another state try to pick our next city manager, and we shouldn't allow anyone who gets a percentage of the city manager's contract get to choose who is chosen for this next job. We need to make a little bit more personal, I'm hoping that you can take that advice because because we, because we just we need help, and, uh, we need someone strong. We need someone local, someone maybe who, um, you know, lives within in California. Let's start there. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any other further public comment on this item? All right, um, with that, uh, I'll close public comment. And open this up for council discussion. Would you like to start?
Well.
This'll be a third time for us.
Yeah, Julieana and I have a lot of experience with this, um, more than we would wanna have, but it has guided us to the point where I think there's a lot of wisdom in this, um. The, the process of doing it entirely in-house is an awful lot of work and very difficult, and it almost puts too much control in the council members who are on this committee, so we typically form a committee uh, both times, but the second time we did hire outside professionals to help us with the vetting and interviewing process, and did have a community element where there's some, some community members, a committee, that, that was involved with the initial round of interviews. I think a good place to start would be to do an ad hoc committee, uh, to bring options back to the council at the next meeting, tied to the thing, I, I've already on my own reached out to, um, some resources for interim city managers to discuss what, what might be possible, not officially on capacity of the city, but just to do my own research.
Come back.
I haven't reached out to Randy.
Randy doesn't wanna come back, don't talk to Randy.
But, uh.
Randy's done.
There was a firm we used before, um, I, I think they would be probably the most affordable if we were to use an outside firm, um, it wouldn't hurt to get a quote on what that would look like.
We have to take a look at the contract too for the last one, because I believe we wrote in that contract that if the city manager didn't stay for like three years, we would get a discount on that.
I believe so, and they might honor that, um, however, there's a couple of things that really matter in this search, one is to cast as broad a net as possible so that you know, you know, that everybody who possibly it would be relevant for would hear it, then to really do a good job vetting and getting to know the candidates and distilling it down to the right one, and being patient, you know, if we don't find the right one, we cast a broader net.
It's a, it's a really difficult market right now, I, I'll let everybody know, uh, City of Reading is hiring a city manager, City of Wyrica's hiring, uh, we took, what, almost a year to get theirs?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and he, he's out of state. Um, but I'm not, I'm not advocating for an out-of-state or in-state person at this point, I, I just advocate for the best people typically, but, um, or you try to. Um, and, yeah, but I, but I will say, it, it may take a little bit of time to find someone just because the market's really difficult right now. It's a, it's a pretty open, uh, it's a labor market right now, so.
Well, and one strength for an interim, if we're, you know, having the more holistic conversation, an interim that has been a city manager for, for decades, retired, comes back to help cities once every couple of years sort of thing.
Maybe not.
There's advantages and disadvantages to it, but they have more time to maybe help guide us in this search and frees up our finance director's time, so that's, it, it'll come down to what we think the projected timeline is, there's just a lot of a lot of information we don't have at our fingertips right now that I think we would need to make a decision on, say, whether we go with a firm or not. We could put out an RFP, I think a good place to start, in my opinion, would be form a committee, have that committee, reach out to the firm we used before, that'll be a baseline for what that pricing would look like. Um, in that, and then I also think it's quite possible to just internally begin the, begin the process of advertising for it sooner rather than later. Um, in that, and then I also think it's quite possible to just internally begin the, begin the process of advertising for it sooner rather than later. Um, maybe even before we have the executive firm in place. It doesn't hurt.
Uh, yeah, I, that's typically.
I want to jump in here for just once again, because I think that's an important point. We don't need, because I, I'm kind of, I'm hesitant when it comes to these executive search firms. I, I feel like they're just a blender. People literally get, whether it's us or whether it's a city or a company, these firms
Yeah.
just find people, throw everyone at the wall and see who sticks in a position. And sometimes you get, can get good candidates out of them and a lot of the times you don't. And uh I have very mixed feelings on using executive search firms. Um, and whether I, a lot of that I feel like is finding the right firm and also being willing to say, no, I, we don't like any of these candidates. Do a better, you know.
This is, this is maybe, yeah.
Sinusure is that I do also agree with you that it's important to get this, put a, put a posting out um with a long timeframe, we can repost it and see what we, see what we start getting and we can always make the decision to have the executive search firm at any point. But I think it's important to get a posting out um soon uh with some things that we want, some things that we're looking for. Um.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm going to be honest with the timing. You have to take a look at schools, um, especially if people have kids, they're not going to want to relocate. Um, you know, mid-school year, that's a, that's something to consider. I think, um, going back to it, going back to the, the public comments that we received, I, I don't disagree with doing a town hall and asking what the general public want. I don't disagree with interviewing the staff. I think that's something that we missed at the last um process that I think that we can ensure now. So I think um, going back to the original recommendation, I'd like to hear from uh Brandon and Sarah too on this is I think the next um step would be at the next meeting, having an ad hoc formation and appointment of two council members to be on that ad hoc to kind of start this process. I, I don't want to start advertising until we have, you know, the key ingredients that we're looking for in an individual, and I don't think that's going to take us very long to do.
No.
But I think having two people kind of take a, a little bit more ownership of the process um is a start, and then those people can work with city staff to organize, you know, the staff interviews. I think also it, it comes down to us uh as well. I don't think last time we really spent a lot of time thinking about the type of person that we individually want as council members and kind of culminating that. So I think maybe surveying ourselves in the process, looking for kind of the nuts and bolts of it. Um, I think the community looks at it from a different perspective than we do, and I think all of those perspectives are valid for this type of person. Um, I will say it's a very hard job um to meet all those um expectations, but um, so I, I'm, I would like to hear from the other council members um on their perspective, but I think my, my leaning is to placing an ad hoc item on the next agenda to, to assign two people to take charge.
Can I actually have a clarification on that? I do want to hear everyone says, I, I really thought we were able to do that today. It's an ad hoc committee. We don't need a special formation, assign two people to start the, discussing the options, bringing stuff back to council.
I would just ask David clarification on the item. David, are we able to appoint two people today to be an ad hoc on this item?
Um, you know, the way that it's written on the agenda, I think you could, but I also think it probably be clear for the ratify it at the next council meeting, so I think it was intentional who it's going to be, and then if you just have it on your central panel, you have questions, please, anybody uh, maybe it's a bit like that, that you're going to function about for me, but I think we should say these couldn't be.
Okay.
It, it's partly just to avoid the Brown Act clarifications and serial meetings. So if those two people know they're on it, they can begin the discussions and the research and bring more information back to council.
Well, I think, I think my point is, is members of the public may have an opinion on which two council members are on that ad hoc, so um, I don't want to negate that for the public if like they don't think two of us. I mean, uh, we've, we've been on the most, so people may
You have actually.
To, I've been on two now. I
I've only been one. You were on both.
Was I?
Yeah.
I remember.
It's you and Councilman Deutsch and then you and me.
Okay, yeah, so I was on both. So people may not want me to be on that ad hoc. Um, I'm fine with that. I don't take it personally. Um, you know, uh, so I, I, I would like to, if, if we do find interested people today, I think that's great, but I, I would like to agendize it so the members of the public can have an opinion on who's on that ad hoc as well at the next meeting.
I think like what David said, you'd ratify it if, if you had that.
Yeah.
Uh, I, my only concern in moving tonight is I don't want to, I, I want to, if I'm on it, continue working or have two people continue working to, to get more in-depth answers because Blake uh doesn't need the additional task of being our city manager search firm in the meantime. So we, we need things to move between now and our next meeting. And so I just like that to be said. Um, I, I'm open to serving, but I, by, by no means have to.
So uh before we jump in, I'm also fine tonight. We just want to open up a quick second round of, you know, after everyone gets a chance to speak up here, a quick round of second public comment. If we do decide to nominate people for an ad hoc committee, since when we did have public comment, we hadn't got there, have a second round of public comment where people can give input on anything we've said, um, including say if we wanted to do that or if they had um that, but um, so I'm trying to open this up because I don't think we're going to see a drastic, given, given prior uh turnout for city council meetings and who generally comes, I don't think having that item on the agenda, we're going to see it drastically differently uh the public. So I have a feeling that we'll be able to get those.
You might.
We might, you never know. Um, I think the more important thing for public input is really having a town hall meeting. I really love that idea, but sorry.
Yeah.
You too, or, yeah.
So yeah, definitely, we're going to take as much input from the community as possible. And one thing I know for sure is we want to have a very thorough vetting process with this. I mean, a couple of things for sure. We want somebody who's going to communicate thoroughly, show progress and be able to communicate that with council. Communication is definitely the key word here. Um, we want to show accountability and we are definitely open to suggestions from the public, open to discussing it. And we're going to make a very thorough vetting process with this. We want to make a good choice and not have to redo our mistakes.
I like the idea of a town hall and asking staff. And I, I mean, I would, I don't know how you would encourage local people, but I would like to see someone who is at the very least from California has a vested interest in our community.
I will say that.
Know legally if we can, it might be an employment problem, but saying that we're on.
Legally, you can say, I think we asked that last time of the search committee and our legal counsel last time, but I mean, David can jump in, but I, I don't think you can bar people from applying based off of geographic location.
Oh, yeah.
Um, obvi- obviously you can put into the advertisement that you prefer someone or you will prioritize someone who has a Cal- understanding of California background, CQ, things like that, which then inherently makes them have to know that. Um, I will say the one for members of the public who may not know, you know, we do have a lot of city managers that circulate through Dunsmere, but this is the first time that we've had a little bit more space and time to think about this. So the past two city managers, at least in my experience, uh, essentially left us uh very quickly. Um, so our, our first city manager, when I first got on my first meeting with him, he essentially told me that he was retiring. Um, and so he retired within like a couple of weeks after uh Councilmember Brian and I getting on. And then, or I think he went to Lakeside or something like that.
Retired and then unretired?
Yeah.
A few years later.
So he, he left us uh shortly after we got on council and then our last city manager, Todd Yuhas, uh, left us after two years for the city of Mount Chasta. So this is kind of the first time that we've had some space where someone just kind of didn't leave us hanging. Um, so that's really nice. And also we have money this time. We did not have money. Um, for the first one, that, that was scary, but anyway, this is a little bit of a different process and we can take it a little bit slower than we did last time.
All right, um, anything else? All right, before we open it up to public comment, just so everyone has, I, I kind of want to just get a few things off or a few things out there on what I've been thinking. Um, so that way, before we go into a second round of public comment, that people can um know kind of where I'm at on this. Um, I would like to get an ad hoc committee going as soon as possible, just so that way they can start, especially if we are looking at not using an executive search firm. That is a huge amount of work. And talking to it, you know, so that way those two people can really start off, hit the ground running. Um, so I, I am pro doing that tonight. I also um after seeing, after having some experience in dealing with city managers, uh, I would like to be on that committee. Um, I really like the idea of doing a town hall. I'd also like to do that fairly quickly. Um, preferably if we can do it towards the end of this month. I think that'd be great. So that way we can get a um job posted as soon as possible. That being said, obviously not next week or the week after. Um, because we do also want to give enough time for word out, to get out into the community, think of ways to attract people so that way we can have as large of a turnout of interested people as possible. I really want to see a citizen committee um be part of the screening process for.
People are going to hate that. I'm going to tell you right now, people like the anonymity and, and that's a hard thing. And I, I get that people, this is always a contentious thing, but I'm going to tell you, you're going to eliminate a significant number of qualified people because they don't want to risk their current job. That, that's a reality in the public sector. So if you go out and you start to interview for other city manager jobs and people know that, you, you are an at-will employee typically. And so I'm just going to tell you right now from the public sector, like I know many people who have dropped out of, of searches and, and became not eligible because of public members being on interview committees.
Hmm.
So unless it's like a final two and you do a presentation to the general public or a final three, something like that where you're a finalist, people will get more comfortable with that.
Hmm.
But having a citizens committee like interview people is a huge job liability. And I'm going to tell you right now, you're going to eliminate a lot of people from the pool. And that's just an honest truth. If you guys wanted to do that, that's okay, but I'm just being honest. That's just a, that's an industry thing.
Well, I think potentially we should, I'm more than happy to do some research on it or think about ways that we could involve.
Yeah.
And as citizens, be on the ad hoc committee.
The difficulty, you can ha- you can have citizens with that type of thing. The hard part is, is citizens are not held to the same standard that we are. And so for privacy and keeping things locked up in terms of like who's on the candidate list up until the finals.
Particularly for local candidates.
Especially local.
Because if it's someone from out of the area, it's probably not a practical issue, but if it's somebody from a neighbor in city.
Correct.
You know, it, it can be sensitive. I want to.
I, I don't want to make a decision on that.
No.
I think that's, I think we're getting in the weeds.
I'm just getting.
But I'm just going to tell you right now, if you choose to do that, you will eliminate a very large pool of people who would apply.
I would also just, I want to talk about the committee briefly where it's, it's an advisory committee, so it'll come back to council. I both
Because we just.
I've both gone through being uh not on the committee and on the committee. The committee is an enormous amount of work. You're very involved. You go through a lot of things that aren't necessarily, you know, takes a lot of time. But council, you're very involved too, and I would want us to be absolutely involved with every decision-making. So it's more of the committee in between council meetings is engaged with meetings, work, et cetera. They check in almost every council meeting about, about the search and how it's going on. And then decisions, whether we do a town hall, whether we expand a citizens committee like we did last time briefly, that would be made at the council level.
Mm-hmm. All right, um, the last thing I just kind of wanted to mention, just, and I know this is getting into the weeds again, but it's something that I really want. Um, council to consider as we get closer to putting out, because it will be involved in putting out a job description as part of it, um, as an incentive, and also for just members of the public to consider as well, because I want their feedback on this is um is, um, I did talk to our city attorney to see if other cities do this, and he says that, or even if it was something that was possible to do. He said it was, and that he had seen several examples of cities doing it. And my biggest thing for our next city manager is I really want someone who can get things done, work on projects, um, and just just get things done. And um, I really want to see when they're hired and when this goes in, have the list that, that they know going into on day one, and it's, we can use it as a, an extra carrot to try to get some more people in. And that is um incentive bonus pay for completing specific projects. We want to see, you know, this is, council understands that this is something the community wants, therefore we're willing to offer an extra thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars, depending on what that project is, how large it is. Um, but just think about something, you know, or just, it can, they can be small, it can be large. Um, but just some of these things that we have seen in this community not get done for years, decades, twenty years, thirty years, there's a, there's lists of projects that this community has wanted, but we have never seen get done just because we don't, we don't have resources and the city manager is so focused on other things and, but just to have them know, hey, if I get this done, I can get an increase in pay, might be enough to have them think outside the box. And you know what? If they don't get it done, we don't pay them anymore on, you know, they don't get it, so.
I think that, this is kind of getting in the weeds. I'm not against incentive pay. I, I think maybe just highlighting the quality of results. Um, you know, we have a lot, especially for Councilman McCasie and myself, the time we've been on council the last seven years, we had so so constrained finances. They still have their, their headwinds.
They still have.
Yeah, we still have constrained finances, but we were in uh pretty much extreme crisis mode in two thousand eighteen when we were elected. And to even have the space to be able to take a month or two, find the right candidate, if we don't find it in the first round, is something that we just haven't had the luxury. Uh, you know, it's one of those things where small cities without resources, sometimes you put out an RFP, you get no responses or no qualified responses. So I think that um we're, we're in a good position to be very honest with whoever the, the person interviewing is, you know, eventually the candidate, that we're very results-focused and we're willing, and I would challenge all of us, because we all want everything. We love the town. We want to see it thrive. As a community, we got to prioritize what's most important to us and really put the emphasis on results in that area, because it, it's really unfair to hand them our list of thirty things we want to see. And some of them are just impossible unless we only prioritize them.
Yeah.
So I think part of this is the community and council distilling, you know, what our top five priorities are for a city manager. But I think it relates to the other, the next topic on the agenda, so we can talk more about that.
Oh, I mean, I, I think the next item on the agenda is a little separated from that, but um, with that, anything else before I open this up to a second round of public comment? Okay, um, with that, I'm going to open this up to a second round of public comments. If anyone would like to make a public comment. How's the time? Three minutes, thirty second warning. Individuals in the room first, and we'll try Zoom. Start off with.
Dwight Bailey, fifty nine oh six Castle Avenue. Based upon your discussion, I want to throw a couple of items out here real fast. There are a couple of retired people from Shasta County. One is named John Stokes from Anderson, California. John Stokes' father was one of the first fi- first five fishing game wardens when they started the directors. Very nice gentleman. Worked for the city of Reading for many years in planning department. So John Stokes would be a person that is retired, that might have no other upcoming city managers. The other one is John Duckett from the city of Shasta Lake, just retired. John Duckett, I think it is, John Duckett. His wife's Dawn Duckett. She worked in uh also for Shasta County. He's just recently retired. I think they're a good fit. They're very liberal people, which is a liberal community. I not necessarily would go along with everything that these two gentlemen would, but because they are recently retired, I think that they could ga- give, uh, people would come to them that are seeking employment, it might be good references.
Well, thank you.
Alan Clother again. Um, something I think I talked a little bit with Matthew about is when you're hiring an executive into a small space, a small town, uh, sometimes what you have to do is you have to look at whether you want to hire potential and set up mentoring programs to train them up into who you want. So an option we have is to pick local, like what Kate's talking about, and recognize the areas they need training. And uh Dwight's just talking about people who might be available to do that. Certainly, I know you know plenty about the job. Uh, my executive background, I can help. Mark Rowley's willing to help. And so if we find the perfect candidate, maybe it's Blake, and he's missing some components. And they're trainable components. Uh, you know, if you look at the, the Cs of character competency and uh character, which one, character, commentary and chemistry, right? So if you stick with those Cs and the competence, he's not all the way there, you can train that. You know, just in small towns, or in my case, I had small ministries where no one wanted to move to Victorville, for example, is the example I gave Matthew. So I had to hire somebody that wanted to be there and augment them with training and with additional resources. So just to keep that in mind. Uh, the other thing, the, the urgency that I think Matthew's expressing, um, whether he's a recruiter or not, the place you start is with an opportunity profile. You've probably all seen them before. The place you start is with an opportunity profile. You've probably all seen them before. If I were gonna write an opportunity profile, I would start with what Kate's got on the changer website, frankly, and what we've got on our website. We pull together. Sell Dunsmere. And then worry about what we're also looking to get in person.
Thank you. Alright, any additional public comments? Alright, seeing none, I will close public comment. Alright, um.
I will go on record and say I don't wanna be on the ad hoc.
Okay. I have already gone on record saying that I would like to. Anyone else?
I I would like to. I I didn't need to be, but I I do think either me or Councilman McCasie should serve because of the prior experience, mix it with someone who hasn't.
Still on the council. I mean, that's that's the big thing is it's like, I I don't need to be on it if 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 another fresh set of eyes is better, you know, I. I can give my perspective from being in the industry, being an assistant city manager. I can give that perspective openly on this on this um council. Um I don't need to be into the details. Um personally, I've done it twice. The first time we did it internally, I I will say. I would not advocate to do it internally from the ad hoc. It is way too much time. It is way too much effort for people who work full time. And one of the things um I did like about the executive search firm is having a professional. Assist us along the way with developing the interview tools, being kind of that objective voice. And so I do know that we do have the HR firm on on consult too, and that's an option just to have Aggie. You know, come into that process when needed, um when we need some of those tools developed. So that it can be an objective process, so that it's not, you know, two people deciding for for five or, you know, you know, that kind of microcosm. Um but tha- that's really the only pieces on there and I I can participate actively from here. I don't need to be on it.
Yeah, wha- what I would envision is this being very much a council-led process, but for the sake of the Brown Act and getting things done without a. Well, full-fledged city manager. Um just beginning this process of bringing the options back, doing the calls. And I. I work full-time, but I I have more flexibility than the four of you, so that that'd be the other factor. Not necessarily more time, but I. Yeah, I'd be willing to serve.
Anyone else interested in serving or specifically wishes themselves to be excluded from consideration for the ad hoc committee?
I don't wish to be excluded, but I will say that. I work full-time and it's, don't have a lot of extra time between children and. Uh but as long as it comes back to council, I feel like I'll be involved enough.
Alright.
About the same, very limited on time. Um. But definitely would like some piece of it.
Fresh, fresh set of eyes and a. Old.
Well, no, uh sorry.
I I I think that'll be good. I I I hope we don't have to do this for a long time, but um when that comes up, you know, you guys have been on council for a b- a b- brief period, I uh. This is gonna be a wonderful experience for you to kind of step back and uh define your role within how this all works. It's really good to go through the process of. Brainstorming what you're looking for and then go out, test it against the realities of what's out there. But i- it's an impossible job. But we do expect quite a bit of it.
Correct. The the lifespan of a typical city manager is three to five years at best. Uh that that's just industry standard at this point. You're seeing a lot of people leave the city of Reading, Medford, who've been there for, you know, over a decade, but that's just not industry standard anymore. It's a very hard job. You get very burnt out. I'm already burnt out. I'm not a CM, I'm an assistant. Um so uh it's 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 a hard, it's a hard job.
Well, I think we should uh follow kind of the framework uh laid out by our city attorney. Then and basically do a nomination tonight and then just throw it on the consent agenda next time. Um.
An appointment and then ratified.
Appointment and then ratified, that's what it was.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Mayor Claire now and Councilmember Brian to the city manager search ad hoc committee.
Well, second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, um I don't think we need a council motion on this too, but um. But also like maybe just pass the ad hoc committee with uh. The first thing to do is to get a town hall meeting scheduled to get some public input, so.
Well, I think you're on the committee.
I know. I'm just saying, I'm just putting that out there that we're, that it's.
We need to create more more work for ourselves.
Why don't you guys get together after this and figure that out?
Sounds good. Um, cool. Alright, anything else on this item before we move on to the next one?
I just wanna note that I'd like a recurring agenda item on it. For the duration.
Okay.
It could be a small check-in, but.
Not with committee report?
It's listed under committee reports. It's like a bullet.
I'm sure, but I think for the benefit of the public, so they know, you know.
Alright, um if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item then. Alright, um the next item is discuss uh current city projects and also do a little bit of prioritization. Um. The one thing I really wanted to make sure that we didn't do during this whole process of going from having a city manager to an acting city manager. Looking for a city manager is. A year and a half from now to be sitting here. What were we talking about two years ago? Where was this project at? And really make sure that just throughout this whole project, that there's a r- throughout this whole search, there's a a real sense of continuity on the projects. Um and. Where they're at, so that way when the new person, so that way we know what's getting done and with also staffs. Um limited resources, um what has to be kind of, what's being put on the back burner a little bit, what's being prioritized. Um with the current available resources. And that way, when the new city manager comes in, they can basically just be handed off. Um a a list. And I also believe that it is really important just because um about a month ago now, uh Councilmember Hubbard and I were talking. Um just about kind of the current state on some of the projects. And I know I'm gonna just hand it off to to you here for a minute, just as I know that. Um project tracking is uh something you kind of wanna make.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's definitely one of the issues we want to address as we search for a new city manager. Is make sure everything is organized and addressed. So I took it upon myself to compile an Excel spreadsheet of city projects. So it's all publicly available as far as from the agenda and just kind of where we are at with everything. So. What the point of it is, is to kind of see what it is, where we're at on it. When it was presented and then whether we made progress or it was resolved. So I figure with council's deliberation, as far as what we want to prioritize, it would be an easy tool for. A city manager to use to kind of say, okay, the town cares about these things the most. Let's look at these first. And anything else that's fallen off the track, we can kind of get some update and communication on. So I think that will be useful moving forward as far as. What we're looking for in a new city manager, making sure everybody has a voice, making sure everybody has. An understanding of where we're at on all these different projects. I know like one thing I'd definitely like to, you know, Alan's come here for. A long time and asked about his onsite cannabis ordinance, and I wanna see some progress. He's been talking for a long time. So. That's just something I wanted to bring up and address.
Cool. And yeah, thanks for starting that and working on it and. Being the um being someone who's gonna be looking after that. Um. The other reason I wanted to have this item, you know, in this kind of format as an agenda is new item is. Just so that way, I I know Blake put together a list in the agenda um packet of some of the, the majority of the projects. But also just make sure to open it back up to the community, um so that way if they don't see something on here, um they can bring it up now. That's the other reason like. I know um I made sure that Helen Kurtwright knew that this item was going to be on the agenda today. Uh as the downtown creek or drainage um is an item that's very passionate uh or that she's very passionate about. And we haven't seen much movement on, so um. I made sure that she was could come in today to bring it up. And I also just wanted to point out, just to make sure that it's on the list and we're aware. Um there's some other things like snow removal, the cannabis organs, just to give the community an opportunity to, hey, what's the status on this project and make sure it's on the list and. Kind of get some community engagement on this item as well. Uh anything else? Uh any missing items that anyone sees that we haven't already just mentioned? Um before I open this up to public comment?
No.
Nope. And Blake followed you over a little bit uh more too, before we go into public comment as well.
Great, yeah. I'm happy to go over any of these things.
Yeah.
I was gonna add rate studies. That was the one thing I forgot um on this. So right off the bat, of course, the audit, near and dear to my heart, so that's why I put it first. Some of the rest of them are just major projects that are going on. Um I mean, I'm happy to give details now, or um it sounds as though you just really would like to get some public comment.
I I, well, no, no, let's go into some details too, so that way people.
Okay.
Be a- aware before they make their um comments.
Great. So Butterfly Bridge, you guys just approved a mi- amended contract. The engineering contract got expired, so we just amended that.
And where's the funding for that? Just so everyone understands.
Federal funded.
Yep.
Highway bridge program.
Cool.
Um yep.
And we have to legally do an audit too. I think that's gonna be very important going through this. So some of these things we are statutorily required to do, and if we do not do them, we either have to give money back or we are not eligible for money.
Yeah.
Excellent point.
So we can't not do an audit.
But.
Just making that very clear to people, some of these projects are already. Uh encumbered, which essentially means like we can't not do it, we can't afford to not do it. So some of these projects are just gonna have to be prioritized, cause they have already been funded.
Butterfly Bridge is.
Correct.
Like an eight-year-old, nine-year-old project.
Correct. And some of them are also projects related to statutory requirements of the emergency chlorination, which I understand people don't like, but it is statutory required. Um so maybe we might wanna just note that.
Excellent notation. We'll put that on this beautiful spreadsheet that Brandon and I will be working on.
Yeah.
It may even color code, who knows? Alright, uh Public Works Building. That's been a longstanding one. It's the one that was demolished due to the Union Pacific Remediation Project. So it's currently been a vacant lot. We we've torn down some of the buildings, you've seen that. So now it is. Um certain plans going forward on establishing the Public Works Building.
If I remember correctly, we just appointed. Uh committee members.
Is an ad hoc for that. I think yourself and Brandon, or you also member Hubbard are. Yep. Uh UV disinfection project. That is uh going out to bid fairly soon. Um and that is to, yes, to disinfect our tr- our water, our drinking water through the UV process. Grant-funded, state grant-funded. Uh then the Mossbury Springs Improvement Project. Um there's. And the emergency chlorination aspect, those are both at Mossbury Springs. Um so one is to improve the springs as it aptly named, um redo some of the spring boxes. Um emergency chlorination, as it sounds, is a spot for the city to be able to. Uh emergent, on an emergency basis, chlorinate the water if need be. Collection system improvement, that is currently going on right now. We are probably seventy-ish percent of the way there. We were able to get it extended, so they're on a winter shutdown right now. So there will be. Construction in the, whenever the temperatures are rising again, but that is the the contractor Cox and Cox. So if you see them up and down, that's that project. Treatment plant improvements. We've had a planning grant for this for a long time. Um there's been a little bit of movement now to apply for more grant funding. Um and that's for the wastewater treatment plant down the south end of town to improve that buil- that structure. Then we have CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, as a CDBG stands for. There's um a potential path for a storm drain planning project, housing. And then what we're also thinking about doing is for the Mossbury Springs projects that I mentioned earlier, there's more funding needed. So potentially we can apply for CDBG money.
When they open.
A quick question on that, or we we did that through Great Northern and that's in process. When will the next round be up if we don't get it? It should be soon, right?
Fairly soon, potentially at the next meeting or another one.
Not operating, so.
I got that.
They they have to reopen and then once they reopen, they'll get back on it. But my understanding is CDBG staff have been cut in half for for our programs. Um so it's gonna be slow.
Yeah, and I raised this issue with our representatives. In uh May when I was with them.
Yeah.
At the state and federal level.
There has been a communication back and forth with HCD staff and Great Northern. Cause yes, we did apply for it last year. We were not funded for it.
Correct.
So it's a very easy application for Brandy and Great Northern to.
Believe we did reapply.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, the answer's not no yet?
We haven't, we haven't done the reapplication yet, actually.
Oh, right, yeah, coming up.
The the second, the the like for the next cycle.
Yeah.
So the previous cycle, we did not get, we're about to hit the next cycle.
Yeah.
We already approved it.
Yes.
But we did that like three months before it was ready.
So the way that CDBG works is you have to essentially do two public hearings for potential projects. You need to decide upon your projects. And it's essentially like a sub-application before your application.
Got it.
And now we're at the application.
If it's federal, yeah.
Yeah, the the federal government really likes this like sub-application, application process, FEMA hazard mitigation grants are the same way. So you have to apply to apply. So we have applied to apply and we've been approved to apply, and now we'll see if we get approved through the application.
Interesting.
It's a really fascinating, fun process.
And and Brandy and I have been discussing, we, she will be coming.
I believe next meeting.
Fairly soon, maybe next meeting, although we might push it to the meeting after.
Okay.
She has something.
Yeah.
In progress.
I think it's like, do you like December fifth or something like that, or fifteenth?
I feel like it's January, but I could.
Does it change?
I think it's June.
Why, yeah. They keep moving that date.
Yeah. And yeah, maybe they are. Okay, moving to the next bullet point column, the airport. We currently have the funds and the grant for the construction of the North End Taxi Way. We were hoping to get it done now, but um. Wasn't able to get done because of winter. So they will be actually constructing the North End Taxi Way come spring. Uh we're also trying to get into the South End design. Possibly with a design build piece. Anyway, that's airport.
Are they still doing zero percent match?
No, it's like a.
Boo.
I know.
Boo.
It it, but it's still good. It's still um.
Okay.
It's like ninety-nine percent.
It's one that's a ninety-five percent match and then the state will match another two and a half percent, right, or something along.
Four point five percent.
Four point five percent.
Yeah.
So we're only paying half a percent.
You guys don't need me. Yeah, you guys got it.
Yeah.
Exactly right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, I just put bottling facility roof with library building and other building city needs. Those next three kind of bullet points are. Uh just kind of facilities um ideas. Um that the, but the bottling facility roof may need a new roof, may not. We're looking into it. Library building, I think we all understand kind of needs at that building. Um and then at City Hall, there is a beam that potentially we need to reinforce um the fire department over here. The floor is potentially. Kind of like leaning tower a piece, it's like.
Subsiding.
Lowly, lowering itself.
Yeah.
Uh okay, so Mossbury Trail, um we're getting some um. Traction in uh some donations for the actual trail to Mossbury going through there. So there is um work with. Community Foundation of the North State.
Yeah, and additionally, uh I spoke with Union Pacific Representatives uh last week as a member of the committee on Mossbury. Uh they. Want to do a additional meeting to continue the progress from the summer at some point this month, kind of move things forward.
I guess I was being overzealous and put city facilities on there again, so. Uh and then um uh streets, roads, sidewalks, trees. That's that's always in in my purview of trying to mitigate um liability. Um and then I mentioned rate studies. So I think with our sidewalks and trees, I'd like to do some kind of project where there is help with uh mitigating trip hazards.
And the creek.
Yeah.
And then I wrote down downtown creek.
Okay.
Looking to where.
And then of course, there are, of course, the future agenda items.
I feel like, yeah, future agenda items kind of sit there.
Yeah.
It just sits there. Um and then snow removal, like wasn't there a process? I guess I'd like to bring that all back up, especially since it's. Most fat timing.
Yeah, and just know we will. Get rid of snow in emergency areas, so we we are on that. And I think our public works crew is great on that, but it is the, I think the a- agenda item is simply. Is there a better way to do this?
Yeah.
Well, and where the, all the work that the committee did. It's kind of got left, so it'd be nice to. Maybe, yeah, it'd be nice to come back to that.
Well, and just. Have some kind of like emergency line or some, I don't know, something, cause last year I got stuck on my street, cause there was a downed tree and then a berm.
Yeah.
So. I can't, I can't do that.
And then um you know, if um Dustin had had Jessica look into the cannabis ordinance and.
She is working on it. Yeah, she is working on it. Uh, I didn't talk to her. I I kind of sort of asked her on a different item. Um, the city of Dunsmere, the city of Wyrica and several other jurisdictions are going to be doing a housing developer workshop in late November. I believe. And so I was asking Jessica about, she is working on it and should be bringing it to Planning Commission. I didn't get a date from her though, but we could just ask, but I know she's working on that ordinance and she has another ordinance update for us. I think it's the ADU ordinance needs to be updated.
Sounds about right.
Which that's a statutory update. So. Yeah. But we could just ask Jessica what the.
We're almost to the point where we just need to reassign people to the committee or re. I don't know.
Planning Commission appointments?
Well, no, I'm I'm talking about the ordinance reviews to get the planning commission.
I don't think there's necessarily capacity in our current format to to tackle that.
Yeah.
I I don't want to lose sight of it at all.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that's a question I have with.
But it needs to go on the list.
I really love the spreadsheet and the project tracking. I think it's incredible. It's what's needed. Um, but I I I'm under the impression we're just essentially bringing it together, brainstorming what all the projects are, organizing it for more a more permanent setup. I we prioritization is going to be really tough besides the bare minimum for the next couple of months.
Um, so with that, uh, anything else before going into public comment?
Yeah, we got waterfall grants.
Waterfall grants, perfect.
That needs to actually move rather quickly because oh, we don't have the the longer application window we're going to have in future years because this one's a little behind schedule. So just let everyone know, I believe it's open until December, December thirtieth, first.
They're going to stay in there where says November thirtieth in one spot, or it encourages people to apply by November thirtieth, but then the the deadlines to December, so.
Well, the project guidelines are for the normal time, but I'd say that's a priority because it's coming up quickly. So because it's new, it'll need to be worked out. Um, downtown revitalization, we can't lose sight of.
Yeah.
You know, that whether we, you know, take elements of our plan and work on actionable items, but we we do need to continue that effort. We can't just stall. Um, and we also have code enforcement. I'm more interested in the vacant building side. I'd say that's where the priority is on a project basis. Uh, but there's also plenty of non-downtown business district code enforcement issues at the town that I think we want to continue.
Again, you have a code enforcement officer and a code enforcement attorney that handles day-to-day code enforcement stuff. I know that we've talked about potential litigation and things like that in the past, but I don't want to get, I don't want this council to get too far in the weeds and micromanage our own staff on certain aspects.
No, but I will say, uh, as far as projects and management, there's some projects, big projects in the cities associated with that, that effort. Particularly, I'll just say the vacant and distressed building ordinance, if you want to go there.
I'd like to request a five minute recess before we go to public comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to do a five minute recess. Uh, we'll be back at seven forty. So I was. Oh, we never stopped recording. That's fine. All right. It is. All right, it is seven forty-two and I will bring this meeting back into order. All right, um, and with that, I believe we're at public comment. Unless there's anything else? All right, uh, with that, I'll open up this item up to public comment. Three minutes, thirty seconds, warning when your time is almost up. Um, same rules as every other public summit tonight, so.
Dwight Bailey, fifty-nine oh six Castle Avenue. On Blake's list there, the third and the last thing is the Mossbury Trail. I think that needs to be the number one priority that needs to be changed tonight. As you remember, when we did that, they wanted one signature on there. There's not a contract between this body. It's a contract between Dustin Reed and them. I bu- I believe that if it's not done now, that that needs to be done immediately because an employee, an ex-employee does not need to be on that. The fact is, we've never received a financial report from that. We know we, I was going to come in here with the exact date that you guys did this. The language says Dustin Reed City Manager or any other city manager or a person to be named. I would suggest that you would tidy that up tomorrow and make this gentleman possibly or anybody here that would be on that to take that fund to make sure that that is secure. I know there is a talk in town that we don't know how much is in that fund, but the fact is, there's many people in town that will not give to that fa- fund as long as that person's name is on it.
Thank you.
May I give some information package prior? May I give?
Yes, you want to give the information up before you start your campaign, please.
I saw on the website said ten, so there might be a little extra. Essentially, it's every.
I think we need one for like future stuff. All right, you're good to go.
Uh, four one one six Pine Street, Alan Magagna. Good evening, ma- good evening, Mayor Claire Knoll, council members and staff. My name is Alan Magagna, owner and operative of Al's Depot and Emporing at four one one six Pine Street. Over the past year, I've asked for a clear local pathway to allow a small supervised indoor cannabis consumption in the space downtown or as an interim step written authorization for prepackaged non-alcoholic beverages and shelf-stable snacks within a designated age-restricted area of the licensed retailer. I'm here to summarize the record and request concrete next steps in regards to how you mentioned, you know, moving forward. This I think ties in perfectly. Um, the state for state framework is clear. Local controlled decides. The California Department of Cannabis Control confirmed in writing that onsite consumption is lawful within the local jurisdiction authorization of it. They cited CCR Title Four Division one nine uh one five four zero seven B and Business Profession Code Section two six two zero zero G. Um, Dunsmere ordinances anticipate a local approval, city ordinances. City ordinance CC five five eight states onsite consumption is prohibited prior written approval from the city. City Council can either direct staff to bring in ordinance CUP with what Miss um uh Jessica is working on uh forward or issue written approval within conditions. What I'm proposing is a modest supervised and standard-based a standard-based, a small ventilated, age-controlled, out-of-public-view area. House rules, state or staff line of sight supervision, security and clear signage. Why this helps Dunsmere? It keeps use indoors and supervised rather than parks, trailheads and sidewalks. It increases downtown dwell time, so visitors eat and shop locally. And it supports art and educations and education nights that reflect our historic downtown district. My request tonight is a two-track approach. Plan A, um, work towards an ordinance CUP, which we're already working on. I appreciate you guys within that update right now. Thank you so much. Um, within that direct staff to to return with a hearing-ready draft or a CUP framework for onsite consumption plus a public workshop date in regards to public feedback. Um, including standards or sorry. I will also include standards for ventilation, odor control, age controls, ID restrictions, hours, capacity, interior visibility, line of sight and security among a neighborhood notice to my neighbors. Plan B, uh, within that, write an interim written approval pending that first plan A draft to authorize written approval under CC five five eight for prepackaged non-alcoholic beverages and staple. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, I still live at the same place. Love your list. Uh, something that's going on behind the scenes and has been for the last year and a half, two years, even three years has been efforts for downtown revitalization by the people, the downtown people. We started with Second Saturday to get it going. Uh, we've had chamber meetings, ad hoc meetings. Uh, Kate recently held a chamber meeting with RDI, leading a great discussion. I don't see Cosmo. Uh, this week, we got a great email from Mark Rowley outlining how we can motivate filling our downtown spaces as a guerrilla effort. And I'm like, this is what I thought Cosmo would be doing. And so I'm confused. I don't know where they are. Um, you know, I guess I don't have to know where they are, but I think Kate should know where they are. Is there a chamber director? Uh, you guys should know. So. I don't know if that's your burden now or if they need to be spun off and actually talk to the people who are doing the work right now. Uh, so I just put that before you guys. Um, for optics with your list, there's a number of projects have been started around town and they're unfinished. I think prioritizing just a few days to finish up down to the Botanical Gardens, to finish up on Wood Street, to finish up on Cedar Street would mean a lot to the community. Cause right now it looks like, why is that still half done? Why does that still have done? And uh, you know, with the thought that it looks like Measure D is passing, it's going to be more important than ever that the half of the voters that didn't want this to pass and the other sixty percent that didn't vote, see that they've got a city they can trust and that we're going to steward those funds very well. And it's not something we can wait for the new city manager to do. It needs to be happening right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Kate, again, um, yes, I wanted to chime in on the Cosmo thing. I brought it to Dustin Reef. A few times, um, trying to get some information about it and could I talk to Cosmo as the chamber director? And it was like. Only the city manager could communicate with Cosmo. So I like have no idea what's going on. And if or how I could be involved, but I would very much like to talk with them and hear about it. And maybe give them some input. Um, and I know that the time is ticking, so we need to get our money's worth on that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Helen Cartwright, Pinewood Street. I, um, it's a question, really. I don't see anything on that list about. The buildings that were being, the downtown buildings that were, um, being cited for, um, the neglect. And is that ongoing? Do we have lawyers working on that? Or is that going to just screech to a halt without? The city, the, without Dustin here? I thought that was a real high priority to keep working on the Mossbury Hotel. I mean, not Mossbury, um, Dunsmere Hotel and, um, the other buildings that are. Uh, falling apart. So I hope they're on your list. And of course, the creek, just to remind you guys, like, this room was filled with people who were just banging on the. Banging on the table. They wanted the creek. And I know you got letters and emails and, um. And again, we're just waiting, waiting, waiting. That's been like a year and a half. Okay. And I don't think it would cost a lot of money just to turn the creek back on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any additional public comment tonight? And, uh, can we have a? Any other further public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, I will close public comments. All right. Um, I do agree with one of our public commentators, we should, just in general, we should make sure that, uh, your name is, uh. Everywhere, but, uh, yeah, and I'm sure you're already on that and.
A point of clarification, my understanding was it was city manager, so it happened to be Mr. Reef. By acting city manager, it would be.
Well, just in general.
But if that's not the case, we'd like to revisit that period, so.
That's. And I, I do have the login for it. I, I know. Everything about it.
Cool. Could, could we maybe, uh, I agree that we should prioritize Mossbury Trail. If not at the top, it should be in the. Maybe the, the top non-necessary core service thing. You know, obviously sewer treatment plant, something that needs to happen and we have to prioritize if there's opportunity. But this is where we need maybe more comprehensive staff input on. What our true capacity is and how to eliminate things that we don't have time for, but get, you know, we're supposed to be setting the policy here. So if there's truly an opportunity to throw all hands on deck to the sewer treatment plant, we understand taking a break from Mossbury for six months. They're right, actually don't, not Mossbury, it's a bad example, but taking a break from some of these, you know, less necessary things. But without that context, it, it's hard to understand how much work is being put into some of these things that we don't really look at that are just necessary. Like the sewer treatment plant, like I for one, seven years on council, having been to our sewer, uh, sewer treatment plant in an official capacity to see what the. The plant is and what decisions we're, we're making on. So I'd like to see, you know, as, as we develop this project list, a, a better understanding among council. What the projects entail, kind of like Juliana saying that, uh, uh, several of these are just non-negotiable, you know. It's not whether we want to prioritize them or not, they are necessary, like an audit.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just going to say from a person who does these projects, y- you have to have. Less projects. This is too many projects. This is too many projects for my staff and I have more staff than Dunsmere. So I, I'm just saying that we need to be realistic with that. Um, the other options is if you don't have in-house staff. You have to spend money on consultants to manage it for you. Um, I know some of these pace engineering is managing like, for example, U B disinfection. That's not saying that city managers are not involved with that. You do have to make certain calls on that, making sure those projects stay on track. Um, but I, I will let you know, these are too many projects.
Yes.
Or like, you're going to have to cut projects.
So, well, yeah, let me, I, this is one thing I want to kind of stress in here too, is that I feel like. There's a couple that we've talked about tonight that. Might be close to being done. Um, you know, a good example is. Jessica's working on the, what I want to make sure is that, say, if we also have a project that's close to being done, I don't want it to get dropped. And hopefully we can just, if something's supposed to be done, get it done. So that way it's not on the list and we can start shortening up the list.
Um, well, I think you started the list. I think the next piece is, as council member Brian stated, is having staff look at it for capacity. And have them give us a recommendation on what they're capable of producing. Um, that's usually helpful. The other piece of it is maybe adding a column to your spreadsheet of which are statutory, which are already encumbered with, with funding. Um, that would be another piece because you would have deadlines for those essentially. Um, the other piece of that too is, uh. There was a thought process there and I lost the last piece of it. Uh, but yeah, so those are two columns that are needed. You know, what are the deadlines for those funding pieces? Um. What else was I, there was another piece, but I forgot it, it's fine.
Well, while you're trying to do that, let me just jump in and state that current staff right now, so myself and the current staff. We are able to handle tomorrow, next week, a month, uh, two months from now with. You know, definitive things that need to get done, right? What I think is great going on right now, the discussion is. The five of you sitting there going, how, where, where does Dunsmere want to be? Where, where do we want to focus? And then from that, I can glean or directly direct me to say. This is, these are some great priorities that we do want to see. And it can be in a more generic term to a certain sense. Uh, then let myself, the rest of the staff, we're going to execute. But I think it's great to, to get these things on the, on the spreadsheet and then prioritizing what to start ticking them off. Sounds good.
Cause I, I have a spreadsheet, you can just use my format.
Oh, cool.
I, I have spreadsheets.
I had a thought, um, I think we should continue to add to this before we subtract, you know, make sure we get a comprehensive view. Parks and Rec is not on here, that's a whole nother.
Yeah, we never renegotiated. That's a whole thing.
We've got to add, add, add till we get the full picture, but I would like to see if possible at our joint meeting with our other two brownout committees. Maybe, I mean, i- if we could agenda as a portion that is more of a workshop, where we actually go through an exercise where we prioritize them and match it up.
Yeah, twelve four.
But this element would be kind of a visioning exercise or prioritization exercise of the projects.
Yeah, I like it.
So we get both the finance committees take on it, because the finance committee, they're going to say the most important thing you need to do is the, the rate studies in two eighteen.
Well, yes.
Like, that's like. No, that, the audit, there's time still, but.
There is.
But, but the planning commission might have a different take and these are other people that have spent significant amount of time. Volunteering in Dunsmere.
You also have several items on your future agenda items that have not been listed on the.
Absolutely. But I also think, uh, uh, if you guys are okay with it, I don't think we can solve this one tonight. I want to see, this is a standing item. It doesn't have to be every time, but I, I want to get to the point where we've got a useful system. That tracks these things because it, it's been left to individuals' memory to track it far too long.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Cool, um, like, this is a discussion item, so we don't need any direct action here beyond continuing. I, I do agree, I think we need to come back to this item, um. Maybe get a little bit more information on some of these specific ones, like the candidate we mentioned tonight or in the public mentioned tonight, um, cannabis freak. Um, Cosmo and, uh, we can go. We'll talk about it at the next meeting and just kind of have a view of running item until we, uh. Until we have everything out of people's memories and on their spreadsheet, so. Well, that means that I think it was already, he was, I see, but anything else before we, uh, go on to future agenda items?
Which essentially we just talked about future agenda items.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
The move in second, all those in favor? Hi.